To Agenda Item 34, an ordinance to provide for the local implementation of the elimination of all forms of discrimination against women. We will give staff a moment to get set, and once you're set, please begin your presentation.
Today's presentation will cover a background overview, timeline, and next steps in the development of the board-directed SEDAW ordinance. My name is Andrew Strong, and I'm the county's director of the Office of Equity and Racial Justice. I also have with us today, joining us to be a part of the presentation, is Parisa Ijodi-Maxudie, who is the Chair of the SEDAW Committee for the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Parisa will be providing an overview, background, and a discussion on the importance of SEDAW. We also have Frances Rogers, Senior Deputy County Counsel, joining us today. They both have spent a tremendous amount of time researching and putting together this ordinance, and they are here to assist with any questions. On November 16th of 2021, your board directed the CAO to identify appropriate county staff from the Office of Equity and Racial Justice and other relevant departments to work with the San Diego County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, to draft a SEDAW ordinance for Board of Supervisors approval, start the process to conduct a gender equity strategy to help guide the implementation of this ordinance. And there are three main components of the SEDAW ordinance: a statement of values and goals to prevent and eliminate discrimination and to achieve gender equality; the implementation of a county-wide intersectional gender analysis; and a gender equity strategy for county operations throughout the region. Over the last four months, the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, the Office of Equity and Racial Justice, and the Office of County Council worked to develop a SEDAW ordinance. On March 7, 2022, the Commission put forth an initial draft of the ordinance. The Commission voted and approved for the initial draft to move forward to public comment. Virtual public forums were held on March 19 and March 22, 2022, while departments were asked to review and provide input to the draft ordinance. Departments involved in the review process include the Land Use and Environment Group, Health Human Services Agency, Human Resources, Office of Ethics, Compliance, and Labor Standards, Registered Voters, the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, our District Attorney's Office, probation, and the sheriff. Beginning in April, the Commission, the Office, and the Office of Equity and Racial Justice, and the Office of County Council worked to incorporate feedback from the public. This slide shows the depth to which extensive community engagement was completed over the past few months, even with our tight window for development. In addition to the multiple public meetings of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, we also gained feedback during a joint partner strategy circle hosted by the Office of Equity and Racial Justice and the city's Office of Equity and Justice. This was attended by community-based organizations. Staff also met with multiple organizations individually, posted on our office and county social media sites, handed out flyers at different locations across the region, held two virtual community forums, as I previously mentioned, and lastly reviewed these 25 emails that were sent to our inbox. And now I'd like to turn it over to Parisa Ijodi-Maxudie to provide us a background and an overview of SEDAW.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Good afternoon, Chair Fletcher and Supervisors. My name is Parisa Ijodi-Maxudie. I am a Commissioner and the Chair of the Commission SEDAW Committee. I am proud to stand here today with my fellow Commissioners and former Commissioners who are here with us, many of whom have worked on this issue for decades, because they, like you, are dedicated to improving the lives of women and girls in San Diego County. The Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women (SEDAW) is an international human rights treaty. In 1979, the United Nations adopted SEDAW. SEDAW was the culmination of 30 years of work by the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women, a body established in 1946 to monitor and promote the rights of women. SEDAW consists of a preamble and 30 articles, defines what constitutes discrimination against women, and sets forth a practical blueprint for action to end discrimination and to promote gender equity. This international Bill of Rights for Women has been used globally to significantly advance gender equity for women and girls in all areas of life. While adopted decades ago, the United Nations SEDAW Committee, which is comprised of 23 independent gender equity experts, regularly provides guidance, treaty interpretation, and recommendations on pressing issues that women and girls are facing today in 2022. From addressing the trafficking of women and girls in the context of migration, to addressing the ways in which girls and women are disproportionately adversely impacted by climate change and extreme weather, this committee breathes life into SEDAW as it is.
I want to apologize to our speaker for the outbursts. This is the second group warning. If there's a third, we will clear the chambers and conduct the rest of this board meeting with folks watching remotely. You cannot interrupt someone else's right to speak. You can't take their time. We don't let someone do it when they come up for yours, and so we're going to conduct ourselves that way, or we will clear the chambers and then finish the remainder of this meeting with folks public participating virtually. I apologize for the interruption. Please continue.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Fletcher. In 1980, President Carter signed SEDAW, but the United Nations remains one of only six countries that has yet to ratify the treaty. In 2018, our California state legislature affirmed the state, our state's, support of SEDAW by passing Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 78, to promote the implementation of SEDAW across the state and to expressly acknowledge the need to strengthen local ordinances, I'm sorry, local mechanisms and procedures. Now, across the United States, numerous cities and counties have adopted local ordinances that reflect the principles of SEDAW. These ordinances provide a roadmap for jurisdictions to take three steps: one, to identify; two, to address; and three, to remove barriers to gender equity. Successful implementation of SEDAW has resulted in procedures that constitute a more just way of existing and operating. Cities and counties credit, they credit their SEDAW ordinance for improving the lives of women and girls across a spectrum of areas. Three examples: significantly increasing, and in some cases actually achieving, gender equity on boards and commissions; improving responses and the provision of services in the areas of domestic violence and human trafficking; and finally, increasing gender equity in economic development, including by allocating licenses in a way that does not disadvantage those with childcare responsibilities, and by increasing the participation of certified women-owned businesses in the awarding of contracts. So why a SEDAW ordinance for San Diego County? A snapshot of poverty, employment, and transportation supports a local SEDAW ordinance. In our region, the poverty rate is 13%, but for single-mother households, the poverty rate is 33%. And our transgender community experiences significantly greater levels of poverty, including extreme poverty. With employment, our employed population, over 49,000 employed women live below the federal poverty level. And employed women are 18% more likely to live below the poverty level than employed men. Transportation, as a means of transportation to work, women are 10% more likely to take public transportation than men. And when it comes to households without vehicles, women constitute a higher percentage of that population than men. This data is based on the Census Bureau's American Community Survey, accessed in 2019. As the economic fallout from the pandemic is far from clear or over, the disparities are likely to increase. Given these disparities, it is obvious that there is a continued need for the county of San Diego to advance and assert the rights of women by identifying, analyzing, and removing barriers to intersectional gender equity in all of our county operations and programs. Turning it back to you, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Parisa. The county of San Diego, as an employer, is proud to share our own workforce analytics demonstrating how gender equity can be a driving force to successful organizations. The county charter requires the hiring of individuals based solely on job-related factors. As of April 1, 2022, the overall county workforce is comprised of 60% women and 40% men. Women hold 59% of all county leadership positions, and since 2018, 63% of all promotional hires were also women. Of the women that comprise our workforce, 63% are women of color. The county as an organization is a model organization for gender equity. To that end, this ordinance is more support and leverage to ensure that this count discontinues in the future. As mentioned previously, there are three main components of SEDAW. The first is a statement of values and goals to prevent and eliminate discrimination and to achieve gender equality. Discrimination against women extends to transgender women, gender nonconforming individuals, youth, and girls, and those assigned female at birth, which includes transgender men and intersex communities. And the term discrimination against women includes any distinction, exclusion, or restriction on the basis of gender and sex assigned at birth. Second, implementing a county-wide intersectional gender analysis. The gender analysis would help the county identify barriers to gender equity and factors perpetuating gender inequities. The assessment will further the work of similar assessments already being conducted in the county. Third, a gender equity strategy for county operations throughout the region. This includes intersectional gender equity action plans for county departments, boards, commissions, and other operational units. The ordinance incorporates the Model SEDAW ordinance available from the Women's Intercultural Network Cities for the SEDAW Campaign. In addition, the ordinance incorporates similar provisions enacted by the City of Pittsburgh, the County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, and the City and County of San Francisco. The ordinance presented today embodies the values and goals to prevent and eliminate discrimination against women, and a realistic framework to implement these goals. The proposed ordinance closely tracks the ordinance adopted by the Commission on March 7, 2022, and incorporates some of the subsequent public comment and departmental feedback received over the last few months. It's important to note that while the proposed ordinance guides and provides principles for county operations, the ordinance does not regulate individual conduct of residents in the county. While some members of the public requested additional provisions to this ordinance, the county's jurisdiction is limited. As a local government, the county can only regulate and address those subject matters within the authority of the Board of Supervisors. Also to note, the public entities may not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment or public contracting. To this point, the ordinance must be construed or implemented in a manner that conflicts, that must not be construed or implemented in a manner that conflicts with federal, state, or local law. In 2020, the board establishes the Office of Equity and Racial Justice, or OERJ, to co-create an equitable county government and break down structural and systemic racism. It is for this reason the OERJ, under the direction of the CAO, will act as the oversight body for the SEDAW ordinance. In addition, for many years, the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls has been an important county advisory board. They are a critical partner in implementing the mission of the SEDAW ordinance. The OERJ will consult with the Commission on the Intersectional Gender Analysis and Gender Equity Action Plans to ensure the county achieves the local principles of SEDAW. Within 180 days following the effective date of this ordinance, the OERJ, in coordination with the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, will develop and present to the Board of Supervisors a proposed plan for completing the baseline analysis, including funding, procurement of a consultant, and timeline for completion. Upon completion of the baseline intersectional gender analysis, the county departments, offices, programs, boards, commissions, and other operational units will develop individual intersectional gender equity action plans. So lastly, I just want to thank the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls for being here today and their hard work on this ordinance, and I'd also like to thank Vanessa Green from our Office of Equity and Racial Justice, who put in a lot of time and work on this ordinance. Subject to your questions, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We're going to first go to Vice Chair Vargas, and then we'll hear from our public speakers.
I wanted to thank first the community and the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Commissioners that are joining us today for the creation of this historic ordinance that both Chair Fletcher and I were able to introduce the initiative first a couple of months ago. While there is no doubt that progress has been made towards addressing existing issues, the truth is that there's more work to be done to ensure that we eliminate all forms of discrimination against women across numerous sectors. As someone who has fought for over two decades to create equity in our communities, to achieve gender parity, to decrease gender bias and discrimination, and who has fought to work towards elimination of all acts of discrimination against women and girls in this county, state, and country, today's ordinance is very important to me. I became very involved in the Women's Rights Movement in my late teens, and since then I have been a staunch advocate for women and girls, which is why I'm so proud of this historic and powerful ordinance. I strongly believe that as policymakers, we have a responsibility to develop policies that are inclusive of all of our communities, and that includes all women and girls. The SEDAW ordinance is clearly intended to achieve gender parity, decrease gender bias discrimination, and work towards the elimination of all acts of discrimination against women and girls in our country. And I want to make sure that we emphasize that in this ordinance, it's very clear that women and girls refers to those who identify as women and girls, including transgender women and gender nonconforming, and those assigned female at birth, who include non-binary transgender men and intersex communities. I want to highlight that this ordinance includes three main components that are very important. First, the ordinance provides a statement of values and goals to prevent and eliminate discrimination and ensure we achieve gender equality in our county. Second, it requires for the county of San Diego to conduct a county-wide intersectional gender analysis to better understand any existing barriers and challenges that women in our county are facing. The use of desegregated data, which is still critical, which will provide us with the tools that we need to ensure we equitably distribute resources in our county. And last but certainly not least, the ordinance calls for the creation of a gender equity strategy for county operations, which I think is fantastic, as we're having to identify existing barriers and intersectional gender equity action plan, which I think is going to make a world of a difference as we're going to make sure that we are working towards preventing and eliminating discrimination as a county as a whole. This is truly a historic moment for us and for our region. I could not be more proud. With this ordinance, we're taking a stance as a county to prevent and eliminate discrimination against women and girls. This ordinance will further give us the opportunity to address the drivers that are blocking women from advancing, and will allow us to look at implement bold solutions to make sure that women, particularly women of color, immigrant women, and LGBTQ+ women can thrive. I trust the work and the leadership that the Office of Equity and Racial Justice is doing in partnership with the Commission on the Status of Women in our community. And so I want to again thank you all for the important work on putting this ordinance together to eliminate the discrimination of women in our region, as well as to create opportunities for women to succeed. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve staff's proposed recommendations.
Thank you. I thank you, Vice Chair Vargas, and I appreciate your leadership and work on this. I'm honored to join you in this effort and bring it forward, and we'll happily second the motion. Let us hear from our public speakers, and then we'll come back to board members.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 75 requests to speak on this item, 45 in person, and 30 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 492 ecomments, 40 in favor, 437 in opposition, and 6 neutral. Any members of the public that requested to speak by phone on this item, please dial into the conference line now using these. Diane Belk, Rebecca Boyce, Judith Howell, Melissa Thorius, Leah Goodwin, and Melinda Vasquez. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record. You may come forward in any order.
Greetings, Chair Fletcher and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Leah Goodwin, and I proudly serve as the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and as an appointee of Vice Chair Vargas. I applaud this ordinance, and I'm grateful to my Vice Chair and SEDAW Chair, Parisa Ijodi-Maxudie, for her tireless work on this ordinance. I also want to thank the Office of Equity and Racial Justice for being a real partner with us in this process, for supporting and promoting the public hearing process, translating this ordinance into different languages, and laying the groundwork for inclusivity. We stand ready to work with the OERJ to support the gender equity analysis and partner with them to create the correct balance for implementation and oversight. In 1975, this Board of Supervisors of the county declared that it is the policy of the county to take action to identify needs and problems of women and girls in the county that are affected by public policy decisions, and furthermore, to eliminate the practice of discrimination and prejudice on the basis of sex within the county. In order to promote this policy and provide an open forum for discussion and action, the Commission of Status of Women and Girls was established, mandated to study and advise the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on areas of concern to women's lives and needs in San Diego County. The creation and passing of this SEDAW ordinance has been an important part of our work. Listen, I arrived in San Diego in 1982 in my car as a victim of a domestic abusive relationship and found few services to support me, and thank God I had family. Many women are not that lucky. So I know the importance of rising above and supporting women.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Melinda Vasquez. I am a Commissioner on the Status of Women and Girls, and I am also an attorney. I want to commend the Board of Supervisors for taking this issue up. It is clearly, by the peanut gallery's comments today, clearly necessary to respect all women and girls that are, and people in general. I'm grateful that this is being implemented. This is a gift that we got from Carter back in 1980. It tells us that elections do matter, because this new board is taking this up and is going to collect the data that we need in order to determine whether or not there is equity and how we can take measures to ensure it. We know that women as a whole, but specifically women who have been maligned by society, are, and have experienced more gender inequity than any others, for example transgender women, non-binary people, and also minority women. As a community member, and as a Commissioner, and as an attorney, I urge this board to pass this ordinance, and I'm so grateful to you guys for making this happen. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Dr. Rebecca Boyce. I'm a Commissioner for the Status of Women and Girls for the County of San Diego, a member of the UN, and a volunteer in the community in human trafficking for the past eight years. And I just wanted to express my support for this ordinance. It's very exciting. It's humbling to stand before you, and I'm grateful to be here, to be a voice for all the women that I have worked with over the years who aren't able to be here. This is an important ordinance, and I thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Diane Belk. I support the passage of a SEDAW ordinance, which will dramatically, substantially, and notably, help knock down so many of the barriers that girls face in achieving equality in today's world, including homelessness, domestic violence, human trafficking, and gender biases. I speak nationally and locally for, advocate for, and financially support many girl-focused not-for-profits in the county, and I know how much our county girls will gain as a result of this ordinance. I propose one simple modification in Section 3 to ensure that the role of the County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls is consistently identified in every area of the local implementation, analysis, oversight, and most especially, in the five-year county-wide intersectional gender equity action plan specified in Section 3D. Without this modification, the ordinance will not meet the United Nations SEDAW best practices, and indeed, would place the county's ordinance at risk of being an example what not to be followed. Passing an ordinance that omits consistent external oversight and involvement creates a situation akin to the fox guarding the hen house.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Melissa Thomas. I'm a staff attorney for Free to Thrive. Free to Thrive is a nonprofit legal clinic that serves survivors of human trafficking in San Diego. Working with survivors of gender-based violence and exploitation, we see every single day how gender inequity harms women and girls. Intersectional barriers to economic development leave our clients relying on abusers and exploiters for basic needs like food and shelter. Inequities in the criminal legal system leave trans women, and women of color in particular, being criminalized as a result of their exploitation, subsequently blocked out of traditional economies, and forced to continue to rely on abusers. Gender-based violence and harassment leave women traumatized and silenced. Trans and gender nonconforming women experience higher rates of exploitation and abuse than their cisgender peers, and they must be included in our efforts to advance and assert the rights of women. Not only that, but California law expressly prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex, gender, gender identity, and gender expression. The law also expressly prohibits disparate treatment of trans and gender nonconforming women. So it would in fact be unlawful discrimination to exclude trans women from this San Diego ordinance that is intended to eliminate discrimination against women. Trans and gender nonconforming women are women, period, full stop. All women are vulnerable to the harm caused by gender inequities, and local efforts to investigate, analyze, and resolve those inequities are crucial to keeping women and girls safe from exploitation and abuse. Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the speakers in opposition to this item. I'll be calling you in groups of five, so please listen for your name. Lana Cotton, Robert Cotton, Virginia Garcia Bishop, Gail Levin, and Dran Reese. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Judith Howell. I'm an organizer and resident of District 4. I urge your support on this item in order to move our region closer to achieving gender equity and removing the barriers faced by so many women, especially women of color and trans women of color. Inclusivity is a must, and our transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex community members have been silenced, excluded, and oppressed for too long. I'd like to commend the San Diego County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, the Office of Equity and Racial Justice, and other county staff for drafting the ordinance and recognizing the connection between racial discrimination and discrimination based on gender. Thank you for all the work that's been gone into this ordinance, and we strongly urge your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm appalled that San Diego County is even considering this.
Lana Cotton, I'm appalled that San Diego County is even considering this radical ordinance to redefine women and girls. Do you honestly want a definition of women and girls to include men and boys? The San Diego County ordinance is far more explicit and goes well beyond California state law and the UN version. It will rip the rights from women and girls and diminish opportunities that have been traditionally in reach in order to placate a minuscule minority and a woke society. In addition, it will most certainly put the safety of women and girls in jeopardy because it mandates that males who self-identify as women must have full access to girls and women's sports, locker rooms, prisons, domestic violence shelters, et cetera. This extreme ordinance is a disaster waiting to happen. Let me remind you of three recent incidents resulting from unpopular and dangerous policy in the name of inclusion. Leah Thomas was the first transgender woman to win an NCAA swimming title. She beat fellow teammate Anna Calendez by 38 seconds in the 1650 freestyle. Anna's dream of beating the longstanding record was shattered. Two inmates at an all-women's state prison in New Jersey were impregnated behind bars by transgender women. Gender reassignment surgery was not required in order to live among female inmates. A Virginia Fodger who tried to protest pro-transgender policies at a school board meeting was arrested when he tried to tell the board his daughter had been raped in the girls' bathroom by a boy wearing a skirt. The board tried to cover up the incident, transferred the transgender student to another school where he was arrested after he assaulted another female just a few months later. Will San Diego experience these types of incidents if you approve this ordinance? It doesn't strain the imagination to believe that. In fact, these very same things will most likely occur in our backyard. I urge you to use common sense and vote no in adopting this ordinance. It's just not fair to biological women and girls.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Jenny Garcia Bishop, and I was listening intently while the people who wrote this ordinance, this possible ordinance, and they said women and men a lot. But women and men have different chromosomes. Women have XX and men have XY. Whether they're buried 100 years from now, they can be unburied, and they will still have the same chromosomes. Women will have XX, and men, no matter how many operations or whatever they go through, there'll still be XY. So there's just no way that we're going to be able to not say women or not say men. The definition is even getting more and more difficult, as we saw just recently by one of the Supreme Court justices. And do we really know what we're doing here with women and men? I care for all people. I love people. These values of mine are written in the Holy Bible. The truth is, I, like you, do not always agree with all people. My family and I oppose the dangerous, number 34, C-E-D-A-W, considered ordinance. Because it's not, I beg you to please vote no on this ordinance, this considered ordinance. Redefining the term women and girls to include biological males will harm the very people who it's supposed to keep from discrimination. It will cause discrimination for females if we include...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Robert Cotton. We can all see the ordinance subject matter up there on the screen. This is the first reading. Before the next reading, second reading next month, I need to ask all of you supervisors if you've even read the UN, United Nations SEDAW. If you have read it, you'll see that, as has been announced before, it's adopted by the General Counsel of the UN 40 years ago. It encourages, requires, 100-plus countries to treat women and men equally. The text of SEDAW mentions only women, never girls, never anything else. Calling this ordinance "SEDAW" is a gross misrepresentation and an insult to the noble souls who first came up with the original SEDAW 40 years ago. Census of April 2020 shows that of the 3.2 million citizens in San Diego County indicates 49.7 are female. In your own county, diversity and inclusion, 60% are women, 40% men. Where is the gender equity? Where is the gender parity in San Diego employees? The inclusive executive council is made up of 11 people, seemingly seven females and four males. Where is the gender equity?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Gail Levin. I am the Director of the Sultanite Council, and I am an ordained minister. I care about people. I heard a lot about logistics. I did not hear a lot about what's happening to the people who would be affected. I'm going to read from a letter you received yesterday from Dr. Laura Haynes with the International Federation for Therapeutic and Counseling Choice. She said, "The proposed UN CEDAW-like ordinance would falsely tell gender distressed people that their condition is like being a member of a race or an ethnic group, further preventing them from seeking help to understand their conflict between their innate body and their changeable feelings and the distress they may feel about this conflict. Increasingly, gender-incongruent people are regretting the social and medical affirmation that's failed them, that has not heard them, and their deep, underlying distress. They are detransitioning in growing numbers and making their voices of protest heard online." I still have 45 seconds to plead with you. This is a social experiment. You can't look five years into the future, but the Lord can. He cares about people. No matter what you vote, He will continue to speak to hearts. He's above us. He loves us. I love all people, and I want to see the best for them. This is a sinking ship. The only question is, how many people will you take down with it, looking back in five years? Again, I plead with you because we care. We all care. Everybody here cares. Thank you very much for hearing my opposition to this ordinance. Thank you.
As the next speakers coming forward, I'd like to invite five additional speakers. Andrew Prakash, Michael Brando, Mary D., Chad H. Vivas, and Linda Stringfellow.
Hi, my name is Dran Reese. I'm President of the Sultanite Council, and I ask you to kindly oppose this ordinance. When my little girl was five years old, I would show her how to read the bathroom signs. The dress was for girls, and the pants were for boys. And when she was old enough for a little more freedom, I would check the restroom to see if it was clear, and I would let her go by herself, but I would sit like a mama bear where I could see. She always came out proud that she was a little bigger girl now. Now, how do you think I or you would feel if a six-foot man with lipstick and heels walked into the bathroom after your little girl? Wouldn't you jump to stop a potential threat? Folks, we don't need or want little girls in fear that anyone who identifies as a woman can now enter what once was a sacred private space, a bathroom, or a locker room. A dress or identity change does not a woman make. You are opening the door for men with nefarious intentions. I cannot imagine females undressing in locker rooms or sleeping in prison cells or dorm rooms with men who self-identify as women. Have we lost our ways so much that we won't distinguish between biological man and woman? We've always separated men from women in sports because medical science knew that men are biologically stronger and faster than women. This isn't going to happen. You want to deny us, women, a level playing field. This is purely foolish. There are two bathrooms, male and female, and we knew that in the good old days, which wasn't too long ago. If we're confused, women have two X chromosomes, men have XY, men are born with an appendage, women are not. DNA determines male, female. Folks, no amount of gender changes in studies can change these facts. We, biological women, refuse to be bullied.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Andrew Prakash. You would have no authority over these people if it had not been given to you from above. You have sparked clouds of division and confusion among the people, and you've used everything under the sun to do it. However, these are not new tactics: racial division, gender division, clouding identities, attacking underdeveloped psyches, and outright murder before they stand a chance. Adopting this ordinance locally will help the County of San Diego achieve gender parity, decrease gender-based discrimination, and work towards elimination of all acts of discrimination against women and girls in our county, huh? Except you've clouded the definition of a woman. It sounds great, but what is a woman in the bylaws you ratified a few weeks ago? You were quite literally the cause of the abuse of women, children, racial injustice. Choose for yourselves which gods you will serve. Money, corruption, power, praise, idols, and yourselves. As for me and my house, as for me in this county, as for me in this state, as for me in this nation, we will serve the Lord, and we will keep knocking on your doors. Here's a fact: no stops. If you were born a man, you're going to die a man. And if you were born a woman, you're going to die a woman. Doesn't matter what you label it as. And one fact remains is that all you guys will meet that mark. And what are you going to do then? That's the question for you. Because I could stand here all day and talk in your face, but I'm not your judge. What are you going to do when that time comes?
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mary D. here. First of all, I want to give a big shout-out and a heartfelt thank-you to both your county council and to your CAO today. They did a stellar job in upholding the public trust and acting as it checks and balances in keeping this legislative body in line. Agenda creep and government overreach are typical of this body, and so I thank those two people that upheld public trust. Thank you. On SEDAW, I fervently oppose the passage of this ordinance. It is a wolf in sheep's clothing, a dog pill and a marshmallow that you are trying to get an unsuspecting public to swallow. The fact that you titled it "United Nations" is of itself very misleading. The version you are attempting to pass would never fly with the UN countries like Saudi Arabia, Somalia, Sudan, and Sri Lanka. So to spin it like it is being presented as a, quote, "UN SEDAW" is beyond disingenuous. The ordinance you are putting forth to redefine women and girls to include transgenders is brazen misogyny 2.0. It allows pushing real women and girls aside from the tops of podiums or even the final 16 to be replaced by transgenders, that is not progress. It is pernicious prejudice. You have the right to believe that the sky is green. What you do not have is the right to do is to force me to believe that the sky is green. Your choice to buy into the premise of affirmation is actually a harmful indulgence. If I stood here and claimed to be the Queen of England and asked you to curtsy and to wave to me, you would be harming, not helping me, if you played along. Even the international classification of diseases, a standard implemented by the WHO, designates transsexualism and gender dysphoria as ICD 64.0, falling under the category of mental behavior. Stop camouflaging a political agenda by covertly burying it in a feel-good ordinance. Do not subjugate the hopes, dreams, and safety of biological women. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Michael. I'm substituting what I had originally prepared with a text I just got from a beloved friend. She's an organic woman, born with a vagina and with the correct chromosomes. She says, "I have nothing against transgender people at all, but they are not allowed to steal my womanhood through wordsmithery. They are not entitled to steal the title of woman without ever having had all the tough experiences women face. A pair of heels and lipstick does not compare to menstruation, childbirth, painful breastfeeding, debilitating menopause, peer pressure to look like a supermodel, and everyone expecting you to be a 24-hour servant as a mother. There are so many factors involved in the essence of womanhood that they can never fathom. Yet, a few people out there, and it is a minority, a few people out there want to cash in on the frilly fun parts. No bueno."
As the next speakers coming forward, I'll invite five additional speakers. Ryan Heath, Audra, Robert Wellstand, Barbara Moore, and Sandra Martinez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Linda Stringfellow, and I request that you do not approve the SEDAW ordinance with its redefining of women and girls to include trans people. As a biologist, I can assure you that a biological man can never become a woman. XY is stamped on every cell of a man and XS on every cell of a woman. Recently, the Weizmann Molecular Research determined 6,500 genes that differ between a man and a woman. No surgery or hormone can change that scientific fact. The idea that a biological man identifying as a female is a woman is a social construct. The term "woman" should be based on science, and I believe the Bible, not social construct. And why should it be acceptable that the validation of a trans person's identity require the complete erasure of the identity of a real woman? That's not fair, equitable, nor supportive of women's rights. It's discrimination embedded in an ordinance supposedly to support the discrimination of women's rights. That makes no sense. Worse yet, redefining women to include trans people is just plain dangerous. The only qualifier for a trans female is to be a biological male who identifies as a woman. This obliterates SIF, women-only zones, or women to immediately have access to women's shelters and bathrooms and locker rooms, as been suggested. Since the self-ID law passed, California Corrections reported 260 men, including violent sex offenders, requesting to be moved to women's prisons as trans offenders. If this is ordinance passes and redefines a women, there is no stopgap to prevent predatory male prisoners from asserting trans rights. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yeah, my name is Ryan Heath. I am President and CEO of the Gavel Project, and I want to go ahead and start by thanking the proponents of SEDAW that came up here and actually advocated for you, because they're going to prove a bit of my point here. You heard from attorneys, you heard from special interest groups, multiple nonprofits coming up, and explaining to you they want this to pass. Why is that? Well, it's strange. This whole ordinance is antithetical on its face to the very purpose of the San Diego County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Let's remember, this was intended to identify the needs and problems of women and girls in the county and to eliminate the practice of discrimination and prejudice against women and girls. And that was based on sex, meaning your gametes. The size and mobility of your sex cells determines whether you are male or female, not some determination from a board of tyrants. Now, what's important here is that this really has nothing to do with protecting women and girls. What this has to do with is creating an excuse to write massive government contracts that you all get to hand out to special interest groups. The very folks who you, over here on my left, and you up in front of me, happen to have... on my left, and you up in front of me, happen to likely work with in the past or expect to work with in the future. This is redistribution. The whole policy considers one thing. It is especially focused on government contracting, economic issues, and all sorts of nonsense that allows you to make up excuses, based on data that's three years old, by the way, 2019 was a long time ago, to spend more money. This needs to stop now.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Barbara Moore. I'm speaking as a health educator, having been in the health field many years, working with families. The focus of my remarks are on the dangers of promoting transgenderism as it relates to the SEDAW ordinance regarding discrimination against women and girls. It fuels child abuse. According to the American College of Pediatricians, "The public promotion of transgenderism constitutes a form of child abuse. Quote, 'Conditioning children into believing that a lifetime of chemical and surgical impersonation of the opposite sex is normal and healthful is child abuse. Endorsing gender discordance as normal via public education and legal policies will confuse children and parents, leading more children to choose a lifetime of carcinogenic cross-sex hormones and likely consider unnecessary surgical mutilation of their healthy body parts as young adults,' unquote. It contradicts biology and science. The American College of Pediatricians is clear, quote, 'Human sexuality is an objective biological binary trait. XY and XX are genetic markers of health, not genetic markers of a disorder. The norm for human design is to be conceived either male or female. Human sexuality is binary by design, with the obvious purpose being the reproduction and flourishing of our species. This principle is self-evident. Individuals with disorders of sex development do not constitute a third sex. Biological sex cannot change. It is physiologically impossible to change a person's sex, since the sex of each individual is encoded in the genes. XX are female, XY are male. Sexual identity is written on every cell of the body and can be determined through DNA testing. It cannot be changed. It is destructive. According to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, 41% of those who identify as transgender in America have attempted to commit suicide, as 25 times higher than the national average. It is dangerous to others. Privacy and safety are at risk for women and girls. The safety and security of girls and women in locker rooms, bathrooms, prisons, and domestic violence shelters is severely at risk with this ordinance. I strongly urge you all to oppose this ordinance. Thank you."
Robert Wellstand, I have a presentation. While that's loading, I'd like to point out that Supervisor Raymer has been absent during this entire public comment session. There is a great deception. Is my presentation being loaded, please?
Mr. Wellstand, we do not receive your presentation.
I sent it to the public comment. Okay, I'll continue. There's a great deception that this ordinance mirrors SEDAW, but SEDAW never included transgender persons. The opposition outcry relates to Sections 1E and 1F and the unintended consequences of redefining women and girls in such a capricious and fluid manner. The gender identity can be changed at any time. This ordinance is flawed in that it provides legal grounds and therefore protection alarmingly to selfish men and boys who game the system. There's two examples. Number one, in athletics, a mediocre male competitor switches gender and then starts setting world records as a trans woman. This is vastly unfair to cis women that don't have the benefit of male puberty. Number two, a sexual predator easily switches gender identity to gain access to women-only events, female-populated housings, including prisons and domestic abuse shelters. Upon admission, the pervert takes advantage of biological women. These things have happened. This is history. You are inviting this into our county. This should not be happening. This proposal infers a legal right on predators. At the same time, there's absolutely an absolute failure to provide adequate safeguards and protect biological women and girls who identify as women and girls, to feel safe and unintimidated publicly and privately. I discussed this concern with a close LGBT acquaintance of mine, who said, "I had a good point," and thought, "Your proposal is out of balance." What's most important to her and trans people she knows is to be heard and accepted. Will you hear the concerns of your opposition today? Don't take opportunities and rights away from women and girls. Don't undo the gains from the civil rights movement 60 years ago.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Audra, it's interesting that the women of this board have vacated this part of the meeting, and I'm just curious. So if I identify as a fish, are you going to fill this room with water, just to make sure that I can not be discriminated against? Probably not. But yet, you want to take women and destroy everything that we are, and that's disturbing because you're doing that to children. It's a choice to be transgender. You're born either a male or female, with a vagina or a penis. That's not a choice. But if you choose the opposite, and then you're discriminated against, they need to have their own avenue, but not come into women's rights and act like they're being discriminated against and that it's in the same class as women. Choosing something else leads to what they're doing. I mean, if they want to think about it, okay, well, men make more than women, so why would you choose to be a woman, go in that job as a man? It's disturbing what you guys do to this county, what you're doing to children. And then it's like, yeah, let's put sex offenders with these women, and then you want to claim like you're trying to curb the violence, but you're perpetuating it. You're destroying everything that God has created and every agenda item that you guys And we know what side of history you're going to be on, and we know that you're going to vote this through. There's no point in even us talking, because you already have in your plan what you're going to do. But in doing this, you're discriminating against women, and that's a problem. But everything that you do is. And if you believe in God, which I'm sure none of you do, I would ask him what the right thing to do is, because he will let you know you're destroying everything that he has.
Next speaker, please. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite five additional speakers. Eleanor, Becky Graul, Becca Williams, Adrian Zaragoza, and Jonathan Peck.
Hi, I'm Sandra Martinez, and apparently, according to our latest Supreme Court justice, I am qualified to speak on this topic because I have a degree in biology. So, since I am the expert on this, women are women and men are men. Helen is a woman, Nathan, you're a man. It is really simple. XX, XY. Very simple. So now that we've solved that issue, let's talk about equality versus equity, because what's going on is there's a lot of word salad being played. The original SEDAW was equality, not equity, and those two are very distinct items. People want equality. Equity is not equality. Equality is equal opportunity, but still retaining your uniqueness. Equity is homogeneity. We're all identical, and we're not. Now, I really do feel for people that are in a body that they are not comfortable with, but they are not women, or trans women are not women. They are men that are in the wrong body, but they will still always be men. You cannot do enough surgeries, you cannot change the biological foundation and make a man a woman. We all believe in equality, being treated graciously with love and tenderness and caring and respect, but equity does not do that. And this proposed agenda item, this proposed ordinance, does exactly the opposite. It is discriminatory towards women. When Richard Rachel Levine becomes the Woman of the Year and the first four-star Admiral Woman, that is not equity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Adrian Zaragoza. Our Declaration of Independence says, "Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just power from consent of the governed." That's why we're here today, to affirm the consent of the governed. We are here to make it known that we will never consent to a policy or law that flies in the face of reason, reality, truth, or just plain common sense. This proposed ordinance to end discrimination against women or SEDAW sets into law the redefinition of woman. Even California State Resolution 78 does not redefine woman. Only this county supervisor's ordinance redefines women as, quote, "Those who identify as women and girls." Implementing the five-year Broad Brush Plan will affect every school, sport, bathroom, family, and church, not mentioning free speech. It does not promote a general welfare of the communities. If you vote to pass this, it will inevitably end up in the courts, cost taxpayers dearly, and you will likely lose your positions. Sandy Agins won't stand for it. Martin Luther King Jr., in his letter from a Birmingham jail, said, "One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." St. Thomas Aquinas said, "Unjust law is no law at all, but rather a species of violence." That's what SEDAW is. Vote no.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Graul, and I worked 37 years in cardiothoracic ICU and as a nurse in ethodyspasticine anesthesia. A lot's been said here, and I have to say, I agree with everything that those who pose it have said. I do know that during the United Nations, when they passed this in 1979, that the words "gender" and everything were not included about it, because that was not an issue, because I know, I was here in 1979. The words here have been added, and we have, you know, the issue that everyone is bringing forth is because of the gender. Men and women, and women specifically, are XX chromosomes. And we, you know, I can go in how it would affect the women's and the girls' lives, you heard it, but I just know that, I just ask each one of you to help us promote our safety, our girls' safety, our rights and the girls' rights, and their opportunities also. I know I have to watch what I say and do up here, because I'm going to report someday to the higher part, the Lord. But also, I ask that you also take this in consideration, because someday we all will be before Him, and we have to get a count of how we spend and said in our lives. Thank you. Oh, I do have one recommendation. I think the committee should consider having meetings in the evening also, because a lot of the constituents cannot come because they work during the day. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Eleanor, I identify as five different people. Can I get 10 minutes to talk? You've bandied about equity and racial equity and parity. I want to talk about ethical behavior before we get into this agenda item. When you took your oaths as our public servants, you were expected to take an oath to some ethical behavior, and one of the things that you are supposed to adhere to is that it's all laws and regulations that provide equal opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, religion, color, sex, including pregnancy, gender identity, and sexual orientation, parental status, national origin, age, disability, family medical history, or genetic information, political affiliation, and military service. So I'm confused. If that's your oath, why are we having to rewrite the laws? There is no, my question to you is, what do transgender people not have that I have as a woman? I don't understand that. It's in your oath here. Why are we rewriting this law? I'd really like an answer. I'm confused, because I've been here for just over 30 years, and I've never noticed that there's been such a push about people's sexual identity and how we treat them according to their sexual identity. That's never happened before. Why is it happening now? Let's just call it what it is. This is a law to enslave women and emasculate men. Let's just call a spade a spade. That's really what it is. So, from the citizen's rulebook, all laws which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void, and we believe that this will be null and void whether you voted in or not. We, the people, do not stand for this.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Becca Williams, and my genitals are inside me. And before I said anything, that was probably the first thing you noticed if you were going to look at me, and it would probably also be the last thing that you would forget if you were looking at me. Because my genitals are inside of me, I'm the kind of being that generates inside of myself, because my genitals are inside of me. That's a long-winded and graphic way of saying that I'm a woman. I need you to use your authority to let me be what I am. Authority and language does that. This is the most basic function of authority. You let things be what they are. You're a good father if you use your power and authority to let your children be what they are, rather than crushing them. You will be a good supervisor if you use your authority to give women the space to be what they are. And you may be wondering, well, how does a word let something be what it is? You cannot think a thought if you don't have a word for it. If you try as hard as you can, and this is part of the phenomenology of language, you can't do it. Since this is so, what must it mean to eliminate a word or to change its meaning from the inside, as we are proposing today? It means that you remove the concept from the minds of those sharing a language, and when you take away a word, you strike at the heart of what unites minds in a shared reality. Fundamentally, language is about describing a reality outside of ourselves. When we lose sight of this and begin to think we create a reality with words, all kinds of problems arise. It's no small thing to alter a word. And I want to highlight that what we may be up against here includes a mass of really good-hearted but mistaken activists. Many of them are not idiots, but sophisticated thinkers who miss something critical, and everything flowing from that thought is wrong. History is full of examples where cultural revolutionaries redefine words by the conclusions they hope for. Totalitarian regimes loved to play word games. For Orwell, this was it. The language was synonymous with the party, and that was it.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite five additional speakers. Joseph Weber, Blake, Jason Robo, Mary Corin, and Esther Valdez-Clayton.
My name is Jonathan Peck. Last name is P-E-C-A-K. I'm a law enforcement officer, 19 years' experience, currently work in the San Diego County area. This is my first meeting, because generally in law enforcement, it's understood that coming here and asserting your First Amendment rights is a bad career move, but I couldn't stand by and let the women in my life be abused by this ordinance. You know, being my first meeting here, I found it very interesting how many different names for communism you have, but mark my words, equality of outcome is communism, and that's what you've been pushing here all day. I'm here to represent my mother, my three sisters, my wife, my two daughters, because they are women, and they were made women by God. Being a woman is not a choice, it's not a feeling, it is a gift from God, and you cannot change that. You do not have the authority to define what a woman is and what a woman does. You've grossly exceeded your authority here, and you have absolutely no right to vote yes on this and believe that you're doing something good for women. It's absolutely unacceptable for you to do this to the women in my life and the 1.7 million women in San Diego County, and I will not stand for it. Thank you.
If I've called your name, please come forward.
Ready. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Esther Valdez-Clayton. I am a resident of District 3, where Tara Lawson-Reimer is now my supervisor, and I'm a longtime resident of Coronado, where I serve as the president of the Coronado Unified School District. Professionally, though, I've had the privilege and the honor of representing immigrant women for over 20 years, in seven states, in federal courts, and around the world. I'm frequently interviewed in BBC, Telemundo, Televisa in Mexico, and just recently in Japan as well, for my work in advocacy for women and girls. Women and girls are biologically noted and gifted by God to be exactly what you see in front of you. For the past two years, we've heard from Nathan Fletcher tell us to trust the science. Well, I ask Mr. Fletcher, trust your eyes, trust your science, trust your- Well, I ask Mr. Fletcher, trust your eyes, trust your science, trust your heart, because when you see a woman, you know deep inside what a woman looks like. It looks like me. It looks like a vulnerable woman who has the equal power to be an intellectual peer to any of you here, but also the weakness and the vulnerability to care for the lost and the marginalized. I'm also a Latina, just like you, Ms. Nora Vargas. I was also raised in part in Tijuana, and I want to ask you, how much did they pay you to sell out our culture, our values, our language? Because I know most of the proponents here are white women. Three of you are men. None of you know what it's like to be a woman. None of you know the vulnerability that my clients feel when they are detained, escaping sexual abuse from Mexico, and then being placed in a detention center or a facility with the same gender that abused them, or escaping their abuser, running to a homeless shelter or domestic violence shelter, and then being placed with a man? Because no amount of lipstick or a dress is going to make a man look like me. These hips don't like, like Shakira said.
Next speaker, please.
My name's Joseph. Hello, Joel. Please look up. Thank you, sir. Hi, Jim. The United States Constitution, Article 1, Section 10, no state shall enter into any treaty, alliance, or confederation. Article 2, Section 2, the President has the power to make treaties with the consent of two-thirds of the Senate. The United Nations Treaty, which you have mutilated, can only be ratified by the United States Senate, two-thirds. They have refused to ratify this since 1981. As always, you have the duty to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States as you took an oath to do. This Board of Supervisors has continually overstepped its limited power, violated your oath of office, and flaunted its arrogance against we, the people, and God. How low will you go before you repent? God created man in His own image. He created them both male and female, two genders, not 150. No power given in the Constitution, either Constitution, gives the Board of Supervisors, Nathan Fletcher, please, God powers to say there are more than two genders. You are defrauding the people of this county by ratifying a fake epidemic, creating a framework for our future other than the Constitution, and arrogantly defying God's moral standard. I again oppose this waste of the public's time and money on issues that are not part of the power of the Board of Supervisors. You all need to resign now. All of you that are working on this are in violation of the Constitution, which is a definition of insurrection you guys can look up too, because I'm talking to you guys that have put this all together. You're in violation of your oath of office.
Thank you.
Jason Robo. Oh, yeah, this is like eliminating all forms of women, which defeats the purpose of protecting them. As I predicted, domestic violence spiked with the lockdowns, FYI, so great job protecting women, Nathan. And, yeah, there are people that are born as hermaphrodites. There is some stuff in the middle that nobody's really talked about, and they're considered sacred and tribes. There is some weird stuff where they're mutilated to fit into some gender norms, so I'm, you know, kind of in the middle of some of this. But the point is, as far as gender goes, you don't know dick. This is a Trojan horse to facilitate new forms of oppression, XX or XY. This is excess power. This is BS language. It's equality versus free speech. Oh, yeah, you don't have free speech if you say something racially edgy, but you care about equality. Yeah, and you say you trust women, but apparently not the victims of Biden. That's been a thing. And speaking of fat lies, obesity raises the estrogen levels in men, so that adds to the confusion that people experience. And pollution and plastics also do that as well, which is in our food and our environment, as noted by Dr. Shawna Swan's book Countdown. It's also from the mass, people are inhaling plastic now. Anyway, this says, quote, "all forms of discrimination." Well, yeah, I guess, except those against the jab, another form of molestation. And, yeah, you're basically baiting and switching genders for engendering neo-discrimination, a new form of it. I'm curious, if Caitlyn Jenner became Bruce again, does that make him a transformer? Or just a Decepticon? I don't know. And Lemur, you promote the COVID narrative, which doesn't hold water. Pretty funny that you're gender fluid and also absent. Fletcher, you're a traitor to the WF Agenda and WEF Agenda, and I was wondering, do you need kneepads for worship Klaus? Is your Fauci-ouchy involving rug burn? And you don't, I don't really care how you identify, but apparently you're Klaus Schwab's
Now invite five additional speakers. Mark Dorian, Joseph Vitale, Rachel Gorkin, Louis Uradel, and Kathleen Melanakis. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Mark, the upper 1% has 40% of our country's wealth, while the lower 80% of the population has less than 7% of our country's wealth. This Board of Supervisors does nothing to inform the public of this scam as they steal our tax dollars to partner with corporate interests with no intention of sharing their profits with us, the taxpayers who funded all of this. Inflation and your COVID policies getting rid of 40% of our businesses discriminates against women, transgender, non-binary, and all other citizens in our society of every type. Quoting Naomi Klein's book entitled Shock Doctrine, "Shock Doctrine describes the brute tactic of systematically using the public's disorientation following a collective shock: wars, coups, terrorist attacks, market crashes, natural disasters, to push through radical pro-corporate measures, often called shock therapy." End quote. COVID is shock therapy being used against you, the people. As for the very real but grossly abused COVID scam, with about 10 million people each, Sweden has one out of 552 deaths compared to Los Angeles County's one out of 318. This despite LA doing the worst lockdowns ever. Sweden never ruined their economy like you supervisors and Governor Newsom destroyed 40% of our businesses. And now you have the gall to be proud of offering people affordable or tiny housing instead of pointing out the inflation bank scam and helping people to prosper. COVID is shock doctrine to make you give up your rights to run your businesses, come and go from your homes, and make your own decisions about your body without being coerced or losing your job or family. And there's no emergency powers in the, there are no emergency powers in the U.S. Constitution that give them this authority. In fact, it strictly forbids them from doing any of this. Regarding the COVID vaccines, there's a 70% increase in myocardial infarctions, 300% increase in Bell's palsy.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Kathleen Melanakis, you county supervisors have no right to implement any part of this radical United Nations Treaty that's been rejected several times by the United States Senate. That you're proposing it as further evidence that you're violating your oath of office. If you ratify this agenda item, you are acting way beyond your authority, and you should be removed from office. You have no right to redefine fundamental meanings of words by fiat. Something as basic as what it means to be a man or a woman is to be left to the people of San Diego, not to officials who purport to represent the people, but in fact represent outside foreign interests. The United Nations is a global entity that is widely known to be, to promote global government from their centralized authority in direct violation of the United States and California constitutions. That Nathan Fletcher is a member of a foreign group that is allied with the United Nations, namely the World Economic Forum, is further evidence that he's violating his oath of office that he took to uphold the United States and the California constitutions. The World Economic Forum openly publishes that you want to own all the property in the world and replace democratic governments with their own authoritarian control. All you have to do is read Klaus Schwab's book, COVID-19: The Great Reset. The people of San Diego have a right to insist that our elected officials uphold their oaths of office. They have a right to continue with their lives unmolested from interfering in officials who seek to harm our language, our children, and force men into women's bathrooms, sports, and other areas. Nathan Fletcher is responsible for harming our county. This is only his latest outrage. We have a right to be protected by the United States Constitution, and I...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, please.
Your time is up.
Hi, my name is Rachel Gorkin, and I'm not here to tickle your ears. 2 Thessalonians 2:11 says that God will send a strong delusion so that you will believe the lies, and I believe that's what's going on here today. So I need to pray to my dad if we can bow our heads. Father God and Savior, I'm here regarding item 34 specifically. Your Word says, "Worship the Lord your God and serve Him only." It sounds like everyone here is serving and worshiping themselves. Jesus, I vote no to this heinous decision to go against God to redefine women. I love that Nathan wants to follow rules, so why isn't he following your rule, God, which is to love you with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength? Because he doesn't know, Jesus, that you are the Lord and Savior of his life. So he doesn't know our breath is meant to glorify God and praise your name. Father, turn the hearts of stone in here into a heart of flesh. Bring all in here from death to life. Let Nathan and those in authority here in San Diego live. Have mercy on them, in Jesus's name I pray. I have a friend named Peter who, like me, was a sinner and angry to see what they were doing to a Savior. So instead of pulling out my sword and chopping off your ear, I'm praying that God opens your heart, your ears, to hear this. I'd like to introduce you to my dad, my God, my Creator, my Jesus, my Savior. Galatians 6, 7, and 8 says, "Do not be deceived; God is not mocked. He will not allow himself to be ridiculed, nor treated with contempt, nor allow his precepts to be scornfully set aside. For whatever a man sews, this and this only is what he will reap. For the one who sews to his flesh will reap from the flesh ruin and destruction, but the one who sews to the spirit will reap from the spirit eternal life." God created male and female different from each other uniquely and specifically created, never to be abused or trespassed on privacy or to change the way God has created us. But we won't know until the truth invades your heart.
Next speaker, please.
I have a gift.
Next speaker, please. No, no, no. Go to the next speaker.
My name is Louis Uradel. In the future, all the best women will be men. Today, you look to adopt a form of the UN Treaty of SEDAW. The UN SEDAW purpose is to protect women's equal access to and equal opportunities in political and public life, including the right to vote and to stand for election, as well as education, health, and employment. Haven't you asked yourselves why this treaty hasn't been adopted in the U.S.? It's because we already have all of that. What can a man do in America that a woman can't, besides the not-so-obvious of have a baby? Women already hold political offices. More women have higher education than men, they can vote, et cetera. You mentioned disparities in income, but there are 22 contributing factors to this other than just gender, according to Dr. Jordan Peterson. So I need to ask you, are you sticking up for women's rights? Are you for women? Let's not play political theater. A woman is born with two X chromosomes, and you're not that? You don't need women's rights. What you're doing is providing the auspice of standing up for women's rights while backdooring a redefinition of what it is to be a woman. And your wildcard is to call anyone who disagrees with you a misogynist, and you're redefining what a woman is without even being a biologist. What is the fallout to no discrimination against women, including men in this equation? Men getting into female restrooms, locker rooms, competing in girl's sports teams in high school? You set, you set no restrictions. Sex offenders could identify as women and go into the local Target bathroom, find a 10-year-old girl in. We know what you're doing, and the foul stench of pandering by some of you reeks. We're going to call you out every single step of the way, and like my boy Sean Fredericksen will surely tell you when he's up here, this is an election year, y'all.
Next speaker, please.
Joe Vitale. Peck for sheriff. That's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to read from someone else you maybe should be reminded of. "Let every American, every lover of liberty, every well-wisher to his posterity, swear by the blood of the revolution never to violate in the least particularly the laws of the country, and never to tolerate their violations by others. As the Patriots of '76, 1776, did to the support of the Declaration of Independence, so to the support of the Constitution and the laws, let every American pledge his life, his property, and his sacred honor. Let every man remember that to violate the law is to trample on the blood of his father and to tear the charter, tear the charter of his own and his children's liberty. Let it be taught in schools and seminaries and in colleges. Let it be written in premiers, in the spelling books, in the almanacs. Let it be preached from the pulpit proclaimed in legislative halls and enforced in courts of justice. And in short, let it become the political religion of the nation, and in particular, a reverence for the Constitution." I'm a father of three daughters and a husband of a wife for 32 years, and I can't imagine all the years I've been living here that I have to come here and talk about such things in my life. And by the way, that's Abraham Lincoln, so wake up.
The next speaker is coming forward. I'll call five additional speakers. Cynthia D., Summer Boger, Gracie Leesack, Lauren Leesack, and Abby Leesack.
Sorry, speak. Oh, hi, my name is Mary Coran. I just moved here, and I live in downtown San Diego. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's such an honor to speak to you today. I just want to plead with you to vote against item 34. We've heard a ton of arguments, both from science, from religion, that this basically destroys the definition of what a woman is. But really, it kind of doesn't matter whether or not you pass or you vote this down because at the end of the day, it affects you more than it affects us because you are accountable to God, and you will have to answer to the voters at the polls, but you should, which I guess is terrifying, maybe not, but really you should be terrified to answer before your Creator that you're going against His designed order and destroying what a woman is, destroying what a man is, and infusing into our city this radical gender ideology that destroys His created order. And so I just plead with you for your own sake to vote against this because you're going to be accountable to God for every single action, for every idle word, and for every single vote that you take. Again, it's just incredible to be in the beautiful state of California, and I really hope you take it seriously that you're held accountable to God, not just to the voters. But even more than that, I know that whatever happens, God has already declared that there's revival in California. I've been to a bunch of worship events on the beaches. There are Gen Z people running this group called California Will Be Saves, and people are going there, homeless people, people with drug addictions, and they're getting set free. God is delivering them from drug addictions, from hopelessness, from suicide, and that is happening in our state, which right now it's like the darkest state, but God is sending revival here. And so you guys might not be affected right now or maybe in 2022, but in several years, you're going to see a huge turnaround in this state. But just for your own sake, you should vote against this because God's going, you're going to be accountable to God. All right, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Summer Boger. If you take DA out of SEDAW, then you have a convention of elimination of women, and that is exactly what is happening. If you allow every male identity, or, sorry, every male to identify as a different gender, you're masking, you're masking gender and making it assume that it is identity, and it is not identity when you identify as a certain thing. That is a lie. I can identify as whatever I want, but it won't hold water in a court. And it won't hold water if I want to pretend that I'm a fireman, but I'm not a fireman. So you guys, it is a perversion to say that SEDAW is meant to represent another gender that is not a woman. I am a woman, and I had to take off work and get a sitter in order to come here. I care about trafficking. I care about women, and because I care about women is why I'm here talking to you in opposition to this agenda item. And there's over 100 times... And there's over 100 times the opposition as there is people that are in favor of this, and you need to take a look at that. And for whatever reason, this is only the first reading, so you're gonna have a second reading on May 10th, and nobody's mentioned that yet, so I wanted to mention that. And the reason I'm holding this piece of blue tape is because somebody decided that they were gonna put tape over the women marking on the women's bathroom today. So I took it down, because I want this to be a symbol to you that I am here to protect women, and I don't want men walking into a women's bathroom because somebody's taped over the women gender on that bathroom. So I'm here also because I have already served Nathan Fletcher with intention at the last meeting, and then at this meeting, I have the claim form, Claim Against the County of San Diego. It is easy to fill out, anybody can do it, and we also have the Office of Ethnic and Compliance complaint forms. They are available-
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everybody. This is fun. This is good. Hi, Cynthia from Planet Earth, I think. What's up? Good to see your faces. You know, the word salad that has gone on here, I think I need a new dictionary, because I'm sure many of you are aware that we don't even call pedophiles pedophiles anymore. They go by minor attracted persons. So with all of the crap and asininity that I've had to witness today and listen to, this all amounts to the hatred of children, because they will be affected. They are the ones that suffer from this. They're already teaching this crap to them in schools. At a certain point, I'm thinking, we have completely lost all ability to think, dialogue, debate. There's no semblance of common sense anymore. The fact that you guys here, as adults, elected officials, have put this for an agenda item for us to speak about, it's mind-blowing. But the sad thing in society, though, is because we've lost the real true ability of the beauty of debate, is now you're just slapped with the label. You're either called a hater, a bigot, a racist, and there's no, at least shaking on it and saying, hey, I disagree, have a good day. Now we've come to this complete, it's a war. It's a war on the children, just as Jimmy Levi sings about. I do want to share a website with you. You know, there's a dark side that happens to people that go through certain confusions in their life, and there is a group of people that are detransitioning, and I would like to send you to a website called sexchangergret.com by Walter Hyer, an older gentleman now. His journey started at four years old. On his website, it does say here, "Sex change procedures are not effective," say researchers. "Ten to 15 years after surgical reassignment, the suicide rate is 20 times higher that of their comparable peers." Passing any of this puts blood on your hands. This is absolutely absurd, as adults, that we have to be discussing this. You're taking a very small portion of society, and you're having a complete takeover of biological science.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Leesack. Before I begin, for reference, I want to define the word woman. When I refer to a woman, I'm referring to an adult female human. Redefining terms can be dangerous. I find it challenging to ignore that most of the world has divided their calendar into B.C. and A.D. in reference to Jesus's life here on earth and the time after his death. But many then choose to ignore every other absolute he provided us. Scripture says that God created us male and female. He continues to tell us that he will call woman, woman, because she came from man. As the mother of three young girls who will develop into strong young women, I am here. I'm here to tell you that I have nothing but sadness and compassion for those who have not been given truth and somehow think that God has made some sort of mistake when he created them. That when he created them male, it was an arbitrary decision. He created every human carefully, intentionally, and with purpose. And I pray that they are met with God's truth and love one day. However, with that said, I have young females to protect, and this ordinance is the opposite of progress. This ordinance is taking everything that women have fought for over the last 50 years and returning it back into the hands of men who believe they are women. Yes, I'm aware, there can be people who are born intersex, and despite the fact that we have people who are born with one leg, we don't rewrite the rules, because we know humans are bipeds. I urge you to rewrite this ordinance to protect all humans without changing the definition of women and therefore endanger the other group. For the sake of these beautiful, athletic, future women leaders, we cannot rewrite these rules. Remove protected spaces, erase women's sports, et cetera, for the exception. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Gracie Leesack, and I'm 12 years old. I do not want boys who think they're girls in my locker room, because I would feel really uncomfortable changing in front of them. I play competitive soccer and do not want boys who think they're girls on my team. That is what coed is for. People should have a choice whether or not they want to play sports with boys. I enjoy playing soccer, but with boys who think they're girls, I might not, because in a few years, they will be stronger, and it would be very dangerous for girls. Let us make our own decisions and help protect all biological girls. Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the remaining speakers in person. Margaret Morrison, Consuelo, Sean Frederickson, and Diane Chapman.
Hi, my name is Abby, and I'm 13 years old. You can tell I'm a girl because of how I look. I'm sure most of you have played sports. How would you feel if a person of the opposite gender played with you? Would it make you feel uncomfortable? I know it would make me feel, make me, and I'm 100% sure that I'm not the only one who feels like that. When I go to high school and have to change in a locker room, I don't want to have to think about changing in front of boys who think they're girls. Boys are boys, and girls are girls. There's no in-between. God created two genders, male and female. I don't get how people got the idea to become they, them. What bathroom would they go in? I mean, some people are so confused that they think they're animals. One day, they're a dog, the next, they're a cat. You can't switch back and forth, just like genders. I'm a girl, so tomorrow, I can't be a boy. I will be a girl my entire life, no matter what anyone says. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Consuelo. As a born woman, I want my daughters that I gave birth to standing, I want them to see their mama standing for them. I want to make something really clear. We love all beings. Another divisive, desperate move by the powers that be. We already know what they're gonna vote, and they're gonna vote this through. As a woman, I want to advise the trans community, you know, first thing first, never trust government. This is not fair. You're born either a boy or a girl. Yes, there are the small percentage of hermaphrodites, but the bottom line is that we are all human. Everyone has the right to choose to identify with whatever they want. But what's not fair, and actually, we were talking about this in the morning on the way to school, I said, hey, mama's gonna speak on this, and what do you guys think? What's not fair is, you know, the physical strength. We all play our parts. Celebrating our differences is what we should be doing. Regardless of how hard they are working to keep us from our highest level of consciousness, in the end, whatever one identifies as, the pure hearts win. Love will always win.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Frederickson. Let's not pretend this bill or agenda item hasn't already passed 3-2. I mean, it could change. It could go 5-0, depending on how much political promise and CARES Act money you're willing to throw to Jim and Joel. I mean, I really don't know what happens behind that door, but I imagine it's very strategic. But let's go, church. It's time. It's time to come out of the politically correct, pacifist closet and stand up with courage. Many of you might look at the immoral agenda that Fletcher, Reamer, and Vargas present here and think, oh, California, how pathetic. Oh, oh, San Diego, this would happen here. But let's not forget, the West Coast is home to the densest population of military right here in San Diego. We're conservatives. We are. We're moral. But why is it that these corrupt individuals, Nathan Fletcher, Reema, Vargas, come on, you're leading because the church has fallen asleep? Let's not forget this. Also, Fletcher, over the years, here in this boardroom, you've passed dozens of bills claiming that you represent the many constituents which haven't had the opportunity to be inside here. Well, I took the opportunity. I went and spoke to your constituents. I went to Hillcrest, and I asked them what they thought about you, and they don't trust you. It's unanimous. You know what's beautiful is knowing that people don't trust politicians, therefore all the people have to do is stand up and vote. June 7th, November 8th, it's time to recognize the powers and the people. We've been asleep, church. We haven't recognized our authority for so long, and now it's time to take it back. We've given these suits enough attention. Jim, we know you're for sale, bro. You're not standing up for us. Why don't you speak time and time again? You better say something against this, because if you don't, you're up for reelection, too. The people are ready for morality and truth. That's when regions die. We're done.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Margaret Morrison. I was Margie Trudell, and I grew up in this town. I lived here all my life. One of six children, my dad and mother. Never had the opportunity to go to college. But my father was a builder. He built over 50 homes, more, in Southern California, and he built apartments for people. Our six kids all had to go out and work equally, male and female, because we were a family. And we knew our dad would not leave us, no matter how poor we were. I was educated by the nuns only because my dear father volunteered as a carpenter, constantly rebuilding the school, school benches and everything. My point is, this is the way San Diego was. We loved America. We loved our country. We loved our God. In 1962, Madeleine O'Hara went to the Supreme Court and ruled no prayer in the schools. After that, I graduated from USD. I had to work two jobs constantly to pay my tuition, which I didn't mind. Also, I might mention to you, had you come over to my house when I was a little girl, no matter what color you were, you were welcomed, male and female. We were taught to read. When I graduated from USD, I was a reading teacher, and I was so happy to go out and help the kids in the poor districts and raise them up and to teach them to read, because that's the best thing you can do to a child. You don't tell them they're poor. You don't tell them that they don't have a chance. You tell them to believe in a God, and they could in those days. But thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Diane Chapman. The SEDAW ordinance will destroy women's rights and protections that we have fought long and hard for. All of you will be erasing women. It will endanger our girls in the very places that they should feel safe and thrive. Already around the United States, we see evidence of this happening. Yeli Martinez stood in front of a train in Pomona and committed suicide in 2019. Her mom said CPS took her daughter away because she would not fold to the transgender pressure at school. When Yeli complained that the medication she was given was causing her physical and mental pain, the school and the trans community offered her no help. Secret gender transition closets where young children can trans without their parents' knowledge are popping up at schools all around the country. Recently, a young woman who survived the grooming at her school has been appearing on national TV to raise the alarm. Helena Kirchner from Wisconsin, and I quote, "I mean, it's just devastating to, especially from a young age, to be lied to by adults at school and by medical professionals and told that your body is wrong, you need to change it, you need to get hormones, you need to get surgeries. That's devastating for a young person. So I'm really concerned for younger girls and boys like I once was, being led down this path and hurt by it. May God forgive you if you vote for this. There's already evidence of what it's done to children and their families." Thank you.
Final call for Chad H. Vivas and Blake. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We'll remind the callers that they should meet their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Are you Blake?
Yeah, I'm Blake. Hi, let's see, okay. Hi, I'm a homeowner and resident in the Hillcrest neighborhood of San Diego City. My district supervisor is Nathan Fletcher. I'm opposed to the current language of the SEDAW-related ordinance. The language is attempting to promote and allow biological males to legally be classified and treated as females. This is, again, scientific information, facts, and logic. As a gay person, I feel obligated to speak out against the trans movement that has taken over the gay community and the Democratic Party. Only gay people can have the solid credibility to speak out against the trans movement. I'm also aware that many gay people are very afraid to speak out against the trans movement, which is homophobic and anti-gay. The misguided movement seeks to completely erase biological sex from society and reduce a person's sex to just a feeling and costume that can be changed at a moment's notice. Trans and trans-equivalent identities, such as non-binary, are just paths to medicalized conversion therapy for closeted gay children. The American Psychological Association has been grossly negligent with its current handling of a natural experience that occurs in closeted gay children and gay adults that I personally call excessive opposite-sex-image envy. The vast majority of us gay people have personally experienced this. This experience in closeted gay children can lead to the behaviors and feelings that psychotherapists are now improperly classifying as trans. One gay cause organization, the LGB Alliance USA, has finally had the courage to speak out against this awful practice of transing the gay away. Daily mental medications, synthetic hormones, and plastic surgery should never be a solution for closeted gay children dealing with this issue. And these, let's see, I would also like to point out that each legal intersex subcategory is legally and scientifically classified as either female or male, and proper testing for each category has zero to do with how a person feels. Medicalized conversion therapy called trans is threatening countless closeted gay children on our planet, and my community is the gay community.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. We'll begin with our first-
Thank you for your time in hearing me speak today. My name is Commissioner Deja Cabrera, and I am Supervisor-Vice-Chair Nora Vargas's first-appointed trans woman to sit on the county's Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Gender equity this ordinance provides is going to transcend San Diego into a leading county nationwide. I applaud you all for the inclusivity you have made sure was included, as inclusivity must be included. The San Diego metro area is one of the nation's top-ranked areas for long life expectancy. The average life expectancy in San Diego is 80 years old, which is approximately six months longer than the average life expectancy for the state of California as a whole. For trans women, the life expectancy is 35, which is clearly indicative of something horrendous going on, and it is truly shocking, and it is truly a shocking statistic. With this ordinance including me, trans women, and trans folks with vaginas, it tells us that San Diego cares for its local transgender community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so my name is Carla, and I'm in opposition of item number 34. I am 100% against this ordinance as a mother of three beautiful girls and a daughter, a woman made by God. Furthermore, this is considered hateful, insulting, and discrimination against us women. It is against, it is against our rights, and I- It is against, it is against our rights and against the foundation of how this has been established by God. It is a disrespect to Him and to us women, and I am embarrassed to have these supposed leaders run our nation and spend our tax dollars for this nonsense. We deserve to conserve our children's innocence, and I refuse lies and reject all evil. This needs to stop. I am very disturbed by this, and all you policymakers should feel ashamed of yourself. We were put in, we were once the strongest nation in the world because we put God first, and the fact that this is even voted on is beyond my belief. This is disgusting and a disaster, and I hope none of you guys are parents of little girls and that ever face the dangers of this ordinance. You are putting our privacy and safety at risk. You do not seem to realize the severity of this possible ordinance. You guys are trying to lie and say that you are fighting for women's rights when in reality you are the ones violating our rights by passing this ordinance. We have the right to change government if it exceeds its limitations, as you are doing now. You all are pathetic.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Alkagan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Herr Fletcher. Ein aushängeschild der jungen global Führer, Führer wohin in den Abgrund? And I'm going to translate that, you are a leader, but were too, into the ground, into the abyss. This CEDAW is destructive of all rights, basic to every human being, and the rights of cultural self-determination of nations and the time. And ultimately, it is to deliberate destruction of Christian family units, of free speech. And listen to this, it's discrimination and elimination. How do you want to eliminate and enforce this? It's an attack on our free speech and against Christian free speech in particular. The feminists want their abortion rights, requiring steps to eliminate discrimination from the field of healthcare, including access to family planning. If necessary, these services must be free of charge. Children and teachers are prohibited from recognizing there are fundamental differences between boys and girls, and that some roles based purely on sex such as motherhood are noble. And countries that ratify this agree to revise the textbooks, and it's actually a violence against biological women. And here are some examples of your so-called gender experts. They told China to decriminalize prostitution, so much for women's rights, right? Criticized Ireland for the role of religion in society. Censored Belarus for observing Mother's Day. Criticized Mexico for a lack of access to easy and swift abortion. Criticized Ireland for Catholic Church influence.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Ashley Ravishy. My name is Ashley Ravishy, speaking in support of item 34. I represent the CEDAW Challenge Team and UNA Ratified Movement Steering Committee. I'm a human rights advocate, working with boards and commissions across this country to adopt local ordinances on the convention to eliminate all forms of discrimination against women. I would like to express my admiration for the San Diego Board of Supervisors in your challenge of gender discrimination and your support of adopting a CEDAW ordinance. This will serve as a floor to address discrimination against women and girls in all its forms, promoting equality, inclusion, and respect for all in the community. The CEDAW recognizes that traditional gender roles and stereotypes must be eliminated in order to end all forms of discrimination against women and girls, taking an inclusive and intersectional approach through its implementation. The county's commitment to adopting a CEDAW ordinance should be both applauded and modeled by other counties. The ordinance has the potential to accelerate gender justice and economic development, the criminal legal system, voting rights, civic engagement, healthcare, and act as a barrier to gender-based violence and harassment, as well as a bridge to housing and homelessness. Adopting a CEDAW ordinance is the first step to creating a roadmap for transforming gender relations within San Diego County, and I encourage you to take up this moment with the greatest sincerity and dedication required to ensure this ordinance is not a paper tiger. An effective CEDAW ordinance rests on funding a gender analysis for data-driven decisions, as well as designating an oversight body. Independent oversight is an accountability to...
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
I'm Vicki Whitmire. Good afternoon. I oppose this ordinance no matter what a human person may identify themselves as. Science shows man has XY chromosomes, and a woman has XX chromosomes. This is a fact that cannot be changed. Allowing someone to think they can be gender fluid is doing them mental harm. This lie destroys society as a whole and affects generations of children. There is proof of men dressing as women and going into women's-only areas and abusing their victims. From young girls to women, we see sexual predators using these opportunities to expose themselves, videotape, photograph, and physically attack females. What about the gender rights of these biological women and girls? This door cannot swing only one way. This is discrimination. I oppose this ordinance, and you need to do the same. Allowing someone to falsely continue to believe they are something that they are not and then giving them full access to something they are not entitled to. This abuses our society's rational systems and makes us look foolish. This is very similar to the story of the emperor's new clothes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from our next caller.
Good afternoon. I'm Kim Knox, President of the League of Women Voters of San Diego, and I'm also representing the League of Women Voters of North County, San Diego, today. Our organizations ask the Board to codify women's rights by adopting the CEDAW ordinance. Events in recent years have demonstrated that government-sponsored discrimination can no longer be allowed, and half-hearted efforts at reform are insufficient. We commend your establishment of the Office of Equity and Racial Justice to address these challenges. The CEDAW ordinance will further strengthen these efforts. Similar ordinances in cities and counties throughout the U.S. have materially improved the lives of women and girls in their municipalities and fostered more transparent and accountable governance. The League looks forward to vigorous implementation of this ordinance. We stand ready to be helpful in any way appropriate. We urge the Board to consider a process by which civil society can be engaged in assuring that the objectives of the ordinance are achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from our next caller.
Hi, my name is Ashley Luna. I am a county employee to our CAO Helen Roberts Meyer and the Board of Supervisors. Please listen. I support CEDAW, but please give the public more time and opportunities to comment on CEDAW, especially regarding the oversight body. We didn't get any opportunity to comment on your choice of the oversight body. Also, the requests and emails that I and other moms have sent to you regarding the family court was misunderstood and not fully addressed. We are not asking for direct intervention in family courts or special treatment. Primarily, we want the county to use CEDAW to spread awareness regarding litigation abuse and systemic anti-mother bias. These issues are not just a matter of women's justice. It relates to gender-based employment discrimination and health disparities, things that CEDAW is supposed to protect us from anyway. As explained in my emails to you and supported by the facts and links I provided, women are disproportionately affected by litigation abuse in the family courts and systemic gender bias in all areas of society, including employment. 85% of domestic violence victims are women, yet we report domestic violence. In court and in society, abused and protective mothers are given less credibility, a higher standard of proof, and everyone misunderstands our emotions. They're not recognizing that we are experiencing fight-or-flight mode or that we are suffering from legal abuse syndrome. We are getting blamed for all of these circumstances, and we're getting blamed for having to attend all these, having to deal with all these court hearings that our abuser keeps requesting. As a county employee, I have personally experienced discriminatory treatment from different supervisors and managers because of litigation abuse and because of systemic anti-mother bias. Therefore, all county employees...
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernita Gutierrez, and I'm calling on behalf of Planned Parenthood Action Fund of the Pacific Southwest. I'm also a resident of District 4. Planned Parenthood Action Fund urges your support on this item number 34 in order to move our region closer to achieving gender equity and removing the barriers faced by so many women and girls, including women of color and those who identify as transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming. We'd like to commend the San Diego County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, staff from the Office of Equity and Racial Justice, and other county staff for drafting the ordinance and recognizing the connection between racial discrimination and discrimination against women, and the need to conduct intersectional gender analyses to identify, address, and eradicate barriers to gender equity and factors perpetuating gender inequity. We'd also like to highlight the healthcare considerations outlined in the ordinance, especially as it relates to eliminating discrimination and implicit bias against women and girls, and to promoting access to quality culturally sensitive and inclusive health education and services for all women and girls. Thank you for all of the work that has gone into this ordinance, and we strongly urge your support.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Nadia Fardoud, and I'm a resident of County District 2 in Del Cerro. I'm a lawyer delighted to express my enthusiastic support for this historic ordinance. Thank you to Vice Chair Parisa Ijadi-Matsudi and the entire Commission on the Status of Women and Girls for their dedicated work to develop a CEDAW ordinance that is not just symbolic but substantive. Data is central to good governance and decision-making. This ordinance is critical to collecting the data that will guide the Board's decisions and resource allocations in service of women and girls, because it will require an intersectional gender analysis of the entire county, the first of its kind. This analysis will generate a scorecard that reflects what San Diego County is doing well to ensure opportunities and resources for women and girls and where it needs to improve. It is also meaningful that implementation will be overseen by the chief administrative officer with support from the Office of Equity and Racial Justice. As we've learned from our sisters in Los Angeles in their CEDAW implementation, having the CAO's authority to direct departments to set goals and accountability measures around gender equity and strategic plans is important to CEDAW's success. This is of heightened importance now as California's women and girls were hit hardest during the pandemic and suffered the majority of job losses. Gender equity is expansive, not exclusive. Women and girls include those who identify as women and girls, including transgender women, who are entitled to the benefits of this ordinance. Thank you, supervisors, and I hope you cast a historic vote today in adopting CEDAW in San Diego, joining other counties statewide and nationwide, and helping women and girls achieve their full potential in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Annette Ross, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Annette Ross. In the name of equity, you're proposing to deconstruct the rights that biological women have fought for for decades, an attempt to change or alter the very definition of what a woman is, is a course of action that will prove difficult to reverse. As vice president of the school board, a wife, mother with five daughters, and a woman with a disability, I understand what it means to face discrimination. We can and should continue to fight for the rights of all people while preserving the dignity of biological women. I urge you to thoughtfully consider the consequences if we dismiss biological truth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Segal. I am a champion of women's rights, but I'm having a hard time seeing how this advances women's rights. For many years, women were not allowed to form their own official teams in sport. Of course, that has long since changed, but now a biological man can compete in a woman's track event, et cetera. Okay, this person identifies as a female. He's free to identify any way he wants, but biologically, this is still a male body. Who are we kidding? With the strength of a male body, giving an unfair advantage. How exactly does this advance women's rights? And what about women uncomfortable with a man changing in their locker room, where people who simply have a different opinion of these transgender issues? Are their feelings being affirmed? Are they being tolerated? Where is the love and sensitivity and inclusiveness toward them? Many people feel this way, but most are afraid to speak up, knowing they will be vilified and accused of hate speech. It's like the emperor's new clothes, and this does not truly advance the rights of women, neither does it advance the majority opinion of your county, and your place in history will be very sad. You all have constituents and people of special interest groups that'll give you the high-fives and the thumbs up, but I urge you to think, think very carefully about how you will be judged by history. I know you've probably already decided what you're going to do, and nothing we say is going to make any difference, but it doesn't have to be that way. You could give this some very serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from our next caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Brittany Mayer with 179,000 concerned citizens at WeAreRootedWings.com. This is not CEDAW. Are you joking? This is an assault on the definitive work of women over the last two centuries to be equal members of society while still being protected under the clear and definite umbrella of woman, a grown-up female as defined in the Oxford Dictionary. CEDAW aims to protect definite women from discrimination in and from abuse when compared to men for equality, not equity. This reworked ordinance is not this. It is the antithesis of the original CEDAW, and on its face is not CEDAW at all. You know this radically redefines men as women, boys as girls. This is a dangerous play against CEDAW and science, and it will have massive implications on women and girls in San Diego by changing the historic and scientific definitions to include men, and now force women to seek shelter with men, to lose women's scholarships to men, to lose women's jobs to men, to compete in collegiate women's sports with men, and to even be jailed with men, as we just saw led to impregnated female inmates by a trans inmate. If you want to redefine the definition of women, say that. Take that on honestly. Don't try to work this in as CEDAW or even, gosh, women's rights. We already have the Civil Rights Act of 1964 that outlaws discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, and origin. The California Fair Employment and Housing Act that prohibits making employment and housing unavailable based on race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, et cetera. Title IX prohibits sex-based discrimination in any school or education program. We are already protected. That's why the UN CEDAW has not been ratified. We don't need it. This ordinance is the antithesis to women's rights, and it's not CEDAW. It must be stopped now. Every one of you needs to vote against this now. We will hold you accountable.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Melissa here. We can all agree that absolutely no one should be discriminated against, especially in our beautiful county. especially in our beautiful county. In fact, we already have all kinds of laws in America against discrimination, such as the Ti- Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Redefining women and girls to include men and boys focuses on one percent of the population. Yet you ignore the hundreds of people who come before you month after month. You don't care about equality, or you wouldn't publicly slander constituents in your own county. You are all hypocrites, as you are all guilty of discrimination. We have witnessed it firsthand now that you have put San Diego politics on the map with your progressive agenda that doesn't represent any type of progress, only regression for its people. What you are trying to pass here today will undo the incredible progress of women over the last fifty years. San Diego policies should be hyper-local. We have no business concerning ourselves with the United Nations or its ideals. The UN and the World Economic Forum want us borderless, genderless, uniform, and their policies violate the U.S. Constitution and the people of San Diego County, just like this board does. This does not stop at anti-discrimination ordinance. It will soon be mandatory to teach to our children and accept it as the new normal. Well, as a woman and a mother, I do not consent to you attempting to redefine who or what I am. Did you know that Satan cannot create anything new? He can only take what God has already created and invert it, reverse it, flip it, rearrange it, or mock it. He is also the author of confusion. We will not sit by quietly as you usher into San Diego policy the greatest confusion being pushed on this generation.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Truth. Trans is never mentioned in this, you county liars. The United Nations doesn't really care about women or our rights. They only want to usurp our constitution. Here are the facts. The UN is a foreign agency whose charter was written by Soviet spy Communist Alger Hiss. The father of the UN, Cordell Hull, repeatedly rejected Jews seeking asylum from the Nazis. Here's how the UN views women. Quote, "Investment in women's reproductive health may lower fertility rates. Women with more education marry later. Lower fertility and later marriage increase female labor participation, another area of economic potential," end quote. That was from the UN FPA twenty sixteen, the State of World Population document. Here's some of the horrible atrocities in this convention. Quote, "The convention is concerned with human reproduction, change in the traditional role of men and women, modification of social and cultural patterns of individual conduct." Article two, "To adopt sanctions, national tribunals against any act of discrimination." Article ten, "The elimination of any stereotype roles of men and women at all levels and in all education by the revision of textbooks and school programs," end quote. No culture, no religion, no school, no country, no human, no woman is sacred under this UN treaty. All would be subject to judgment, tribunals, and sanctions by a body of twenty-three unelected people from around the world. What constitutes discrimination isn't even defined. If you support this treaty, you should be tried for treason immediately for going around our Senate, who chose not to ratify it for a reason.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Megan B. As I understand it, item thirty-four will change the legal definition of a woman to include transgender women and gender-fluid individuals. As a biological woman and young mother, I urge you to strongly oppose item thirty-four. By changing this legal definition, men who self-identify as women will now have access to your county's most vulnerable. Biologically born females will not be protected in battered women's shelters, women's prisons, women's low-income housing units, women's locker rooms, and restrooms, to name a few. Do not give biological men access to young girls. This is a dangerous precedent that, in fact, will not protect biological women. This loophole will be exploited by predators. And if this ordinance passes, innocent girls and women will be harmed. Should violent crimes arise in San Diego, which include physical abuse, rape, unwanted pregnancy, human trafficking, and suicide, you will have only yourselves to thank for these preventable tragedies. I hope your consciousness can live with these hard truths. I'll end with this. By passing this ordinance, you're choosing biological men over biological women. This ordinance does not champion women and girls. It caters to a small population of biological men.
Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nori. I'm from District One. I'm in Chilerazca. And I'm a woman. I was created, you know, by a man. And it's just really weird how CEDAW is just like a random gibberish word. I'm sorry, but it sounds like when I was a teenager and I talked to, like, my other teenager friends, and we would make the words, or say, hey, hello, hello. How was, how's it going, how's it going? Like, it would be random stuff. And you guys are just violating people's rights now. How about white girls? Or like, any kind of, and that's what trips me out about this is because they're girls. They're underage girls. Like, everything that has already been said is out there, and it will be challenged. And the county of San Diego keeps on getting sued, so I don't understand why this is still happening. Should we make up things like maybe Amy Reichert should take over tomorrow? And, you know, Nathan Fletcher, you could stay home, because obviously you guys are a champion for Zoom calls and stuff like that since you took that doc that you had inside information from, from your buddy Gavin, right? But this is just malicious. It's a direct attack on children. And you guys keep on saying girls, like I said, and it's disgusting because these are minor children. Stop attacking us. Stop waging war on us. And it's just not fair. And it's very biased towards any other color because you guys haven't, you guys keep on saying minorities, but I'm, I have not heard anything. You guys didn't say white, and that's awful. Like, what about them? That's already, you know, very biased and discriminating towards that. Be fair. And it's pretty wicked that, you know, you guys have the audacity to try to take CEDAW. What in the world?
Thank you. Next caller.
My name is Jim Bays, and I've pastored in the San Diego County for almost fifty years. I want to thank the board and the vice chair and the chair for allowing me to do so. You've heard a lot. I, I think the danger of being about the forty-fifth or fiftieth person to say something is everything's been said at least once, and many things twice or three times. But in this proposed ordinance, there are several points of concern to me. Instead of providing equality for women and girls, it would seem to me that it's making them more vulnerable to unfair competition in sports, assaults in restrooms, locker rooms, and prisons, when the terms women and girls mean anything and everything, then in actuality, they mean nothing at all. In other words, we're not talking about equality now for women and girls. We're talking about trying to make men and boys identical to women and girls. Why am I concerned about this ordinance? News worthy because of Leah Thomas, who did poorly against men when competing with men, but now is winning all kinds of swim meets competing as a girl. Secondly, I don't think any of you supervisors really intend to have the consequences that could follow with assaults and problems that can be generated. So, the first word on this whole topic, Genesis one twenty-seven, "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God created he/him, male and female, created him them," ought to be also the last word, in my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Allison Smith El Cajon. This board spends a lot of time talking about mental health issues, yet you Democrat supervisors consistently approve things that exacerbate mental health crises, such as enforcing draconian COVID lockdown orders and declaring San Diego County a champion of reproductive freedom, which is a euphemism for abortion and all the emotional anguish that abortion causes. Now you want to implement a version of the United Nations CEDAW ordinance that will create further mental health crises by including biological men pretending to be women in the definition of women. This will increase the anxiety of real women by allowing biological males into domestic violence shelters with immediate violent implications for real women victimized by domestic violence. The last time I checked DSM-FIVE, the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, gender dysphoria is still listed as a mental disorder. Gender dysphoric people need treatment to overcome that disorder, not affirmation by allowing them to share real women's spaces. By implementing this proposed version of CEDAW, our county supervisors are contributing to not lessening mental health crises. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hello, my name is Cindy Paris, and I'm opposed to this item. Ezekiel thirty-three, six through seven. "But if the watchman sees the sword coming and does not blow the trumpet, so that people are not warned, and the sword comes and takes any of them, that person is taken away in his iniquity, but his blood I will require at the watchman's hand. So you, son of man, I have made a watchman for the house of Israel. Whereat whenever you hear a word from my mouth, you shall give them warning from me." This is the warning for San Diego. God said, male and female. Everyone here wants equality of opportunity for all people, but today this board may take a step backward in the area of women's rights. Today, you may eradicate many of the protections women have gained in the last one hundred years. This ordinance goes against the doctrine of equity. Equity says that we give each person what they need to succeed. In this ordinance, you are stripping women and girls of the equity of our own sports, not to mention locker rooms and restrooms. You will be allowing biological males, who are clearly different chromosomally and anatomically from women despite their feelings or identification, to gain access to rights and protections we women deserve to keep for ourselves. You will one day have to look a young woman or girl in the eyes and tell them, "I did that." When they are heartbroken because a biological male took their wind from them or have been violated in the locker room or bathroom. Anti-discrimination laws are already in place that protect men who identify as women, LGBT, and others. You will be putting Title IX funds at schools throughout our county in jeopardy. You are putting generations of children in jeopardy of mental illness. This is not right. Joel Anderson, you are my representative, and I'm asking you to vote no. Jim Desmond, you're up for election. Please vote no. This is the first reading. We'll be back.
Now hear from the next caller.
Kevin Stevenson. So I am enthusiastically in support of item thirty-four, and here's why. Trans people are under attack across this country. Bigotry against them has proven to be common among the right-wing base in this country and, as we've been hearing for the last hour, hour and a half, the right-wing base of San Diego County. I've only been listening to the last thirty minutes of comments, and I already want to scream because I've, I've been hearing so much ignorance, so much stupidity, so much TERF mentality, and so much just outright disgust. And, you know, I gotta tell you, as a San Diego County resident, it disgusts me. I genuinely believe that the majority of San Diego County residents support LGBTQ plus rights, including the trans community. But unfortunately, the people who tend to show up to speak up at these meetings are transphobes. They are TERFs. They are bigoted assholes. Oh, I called you an asshole? To all the people who just spoke? Well, you know what? Tough. You are a bigot. You can hide behind, "Oh, I support equality for everyone, but..." No, no, no. If there's a "but," you do not support equality for everyone. You just straight up don't. You are a bigot. So, I hope that this body votes in favor of this ordinance. And to what the last, the last person said about Jim Desmond, I dare you to vote against it because remember, you've got a Democratic challenger who's challenging you, and you better be certain that if you vote against this ordinance, there will be a lot LGBT folks in North County that want to out-
Next caller.
Hi, my name is Carla Milan, and I'm here to speak on item number thirty-four.
Ma'am, please, 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 hold, hold, hold your comments for a minute. Sir, in the second to last row, that's your third warning for disruptive conduct. I'm gonna need to ask you to leave. Okay, thank you. Have a good day. Try again tomorrow.
Hi, is this Jonathan?
Please proceed.
I'm sorry, is this Nathan?
Okay, go ahead. We will, we will restart your time. Go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
I appreciate that. Is this Nathan? Hello?
Please go ahead with your comments. Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, so I just wanted to call in, kind of like Jonathan Peck. This is my first meeting, and I can just say it is repulsive how much time you guys have spent and money you guys have spent on entertaining these kind of disgusting measures. It's a violation, obviously, and I know you guys can't sit well with it, that you guys would want to choose, make us choose what we identify as. There's, we are just people. You know, we don't need to choose. We are all gonna continue to fight against this kind of tyrannical, like, decision-making. Yeah, so anyway, I wasn't able to be there in person, but I just wanted to let you know, my household and everybody that I stand with is against anything like this. It's offensive. It's, it's unnatural, and it's not good for the children. Like, this is our next generation, and that's why we're pulling them away from your, your idea and concepts. And we're creating something out of love, friendship, and not, not gonna be fit into any of your guys' boxes. So, again, it's a huge waste of time, energy, and money that you guys are doing here. It's, it's a real loss, and it's a real sad, sad situation. So, I hope you guys go home and think about, like, how you guys are impacting our culture and our societies. We're recreating something now because we can't live with what you guys are doing. This is insane, totally insane. And honestly, it's, it's just, it's a waste of my money, too. I can't believe that you guys actually do this all the time for measures like this. Anyhow, that's all.
Can you please? Can you please state your name for the audio record?
Carla Milan.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
This is Angel Serrano, calling in opposition to this proposition number thirty-four, this ordinance. I would like to speak directly to Nora Vargas and Tara Lawson. Don't turn your back on women. This whole redefining the term of women and girls to include men and boys is a Trojan horse that, that will undermine women's rights, that turns back the clock two hundred years. It allows men into safe places like locker rooms, women's prisons, domestic violence shelters. Do not ignore biological realities. Biological men are different in all their DNA and every cell of their body, no matter how they feel psychologically for the day. They're taller, bigger bones, bigger muscles. And how can you guarantee that in- And how can you guarantee that in the age of gender fluidity, that a sexual predator won't wake up and say, hey, if I put on a dress, I can get into the women's shelters or into the women's locker rooms? There's already been an incident of a teenage boy in a girl's locker room in Texas sodomizing and raping a girl. They moved him to another school. He did it again there to another girl in another locker room. This is dangerous. You cannot guarantee women's safety. Do not turn your back on women. Vote no and fix this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Hosses. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to share my husband's unique perspective on SEDA as director of HR for a nonprofit here in the county. In his words, "The very point of SEDA is to protect the rights of women. With this proposal to include biological men in the definition of women, the very principles and protections sought by SEDA are undermined. Any affirmative action taken to include, reserve, prefer, or advantage women in contracts, hiring, advances, or the like would be undone by including biological men in those actions." We've already seen this to be the case in athletics where hardworking, dedicated girls and women have had their achievements and efforts undermined and taken away by biological males. This ordinance would do the very same thing in the name of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The question must be asked, where is the equity for biological girls and women? It appears it doesn't really matter as long as you appear to be magnanimous and inclusive. At its core, this ordinance defies logic, history, and most significantly, our Creator God, who made us in His image as male and female. Who are you, oh man, oh woman, to take it upon yourselves to redefine what God has already defined? Let me remind you, Mr. Fletcher, your job is on the line, and your support of this today will provide just one more significant reason for San Diegans to overwhelmingly vote for Amy Reichert, a God-fearing woman who will truly represent the majority of San Diegans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name's Alexandra Moats, and I'm speaking in opposition to item 34.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a protective services social worker. I'm also a biological woman, who is the mother of three children, the sister of three women. We are all opposed against this SEDA ordinance. Let me tell you why. It discriminates against women, simply because you are redefining what a woman is, to include biological men who self-identify as women, in which by the mere, the sheer fact of having XY chromosomes, are physically stronger, usually taller than most biological women. You are giving them access to safe places for women, such as locker rooms, college dorms, women's prisons, and women's domestic violence shelters. Now, as a protective services worker, I'm the one who interviews the children that have been groomed, the children who've been molested, and the women that have been abused by men with no scruples. Now, you are forcing us to trust and on the good faith that someone is actually transitioning. But let me ask you, how will you keep a male who self-identifies as a woman from reaching his victim or revictimizing a woman in a woman's prison or in a domestic violence shelter? How will you keep a sexual harasser who will self-identify as a woman from going to a woman's college locker or a woman's college dorm and harass her and even assault her, assault a woman or young girl? You will be forcing all the women in San Diego to give up safety and taking us back.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Fletcher, that concludes Papa's comment on this item.
All right. Let's go to, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to everybody who presented and called in today. It's a very emotional, abort agenda item here. And, you know, the convention on the elimination of all forms of discrimination against women, I think should be embraced. I mean, this original SEDA that was written in, or was adopted, I guess, ratified by the General Assembly of the UN in 1979, as I read it, and it's only about 10 pages long, and it's very well-written, it's very good, and it does, you know, address the elimination of all forms of discrimination against women. And I certainly agree with that, and I think we should all embrace this original version. But I think unfortunately, I think we have here today is we've got a solution in search of a problem. With this board letter, you know, we're led to believe that the county is unfair and discriminatory towards women. And as we saw from the data and the statistics, we're not. We're really a leader, and I commend our county staff and all of our members here for taking on this leadership. And I'll repeat these numbers, the county workforce is 60% women, 40% men. 63% of all in-house hires are women. 59% of the county leadership positions are women. And 63% of the women in the workforce are women of color. We should be applauding that. And I think it's fantastic. Can we do better? We could always do better. And I applaud Supervisor Vargas, and I always appreciate your efforts. You always are a fighter for equality and equity. You do. Every ounce of your being fights for that, and I appreciate it. But I got to tell you, I struggle with this one. So SEDA, actually developed by the United Nations, is an international and federal issue. And our own federal government has not chosen to adopt SEDA in over 43 years, and it's been under both Republican and many Democratic administrations, and they haven't accepted it. I don't know why. I mean, it's actually, I could probably vote for it today, but I have to have a lawyer kind of look at this closer. But, you know, it hasn't been accepted, which is really kind of odd to me. And I support, I've got nothing against transgender men or women. I'll fight for everyone's rights, you know, equally. But today's actions differ from the original SEDA. To say I'm voting against or voting for SEDA, and what's different from today is the redefinition or the definition of women. And I'm not sure if LA, San Francisco, or Pittsburgh, I think, or a couple other cities that had passed a SEDA law, I'm not sure what their definitions were at that point in time. But as noted, there are biological differences. And the new definition presented here today, in my mind, opens the door to biological men who identify as women to compete in women's sports, to compete for women's scholarships, and to compete for the unique opportunities and facilities that only apply to women and girls. So thereby, in my opinion, it's taking away from biological women, and that in itself, I think, is discriminatory towards women. So I think as a country, we should always strive to do better. We should protect everyone's rights, and we should, I think we can do so, we can do better here at the county of San Diego with SEDA, but not with the definition that we have before us today. So I want to protect everyone's rights, including women's and girls, and I won't be supporting that. Thank you.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Before we vote, I just want to make a brief comment, more to those who have worked on these issues for so many years and have dedicated so much of your energy and your life towards this notion that we should be on a path to a more perfect union. And I think today is a demonstration that that path is not always smooth. But it's a path that's worth being on. There is a basic belief that all were created equal, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. But that means they need to be treated equally. Now, there's no, and I've never advocated for equality of outcome, but there is supposed to be equality of opportunity. And that is rooted in the basic dignity that we show towards one another, even if they may be different than us. And the simple belief is that shouldn't be controversial. Now, we sat here for hours on end, and no one interrupted any of the speakers that were talking now, and it's not going to happen the other way. This is your second warning. One more and you'll be gone, too. Because we sat and let everyone have their say, and no one interrupted any of the speakers who came down here and spoke differently, and we're not going to do it the other way. So the basic belief, it shouldn't be controversial. But we know it is, and it always has been. Whether we were talking back in the day before I was involved in this around women's suffrage, whether we were talking about the Civil Rights Act or the Voting Rights Act, in more recent history, talking about the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell, or marriage equality, or where we're talking today about gender and identity. In every one of those instances, we hear different variations of the exact same argument. It is the exact same argument. And it's an argument rooted in fear by people who are afraid of someone who may not look like them or be like them. And somehow, allowing that person to be treated equally or fairly will in some way diminish the other person, and it won't, and it hasn't. And it never will. But it is literally the same argument with the same points they're making. And as wrong as it was 100 years ago, or 50 years ago, or 20 years ago, it's wrong today. And so for those of you that have invested so much in this fight, do not be discouraged by what you see, and do not lose hope. Because time and again, when confronted with rejection versus acceptance, when confronted with hate and fear versus love, in so many instances, our country does choose the right way and move in the right direction. And that path to a more perfect union is not linear, and it is not smooth, and it is not perfect, but that's the direction we're traveling. And so I want all of you to take a little bit of hope and a little bit of encouragement that today, the Board of Supervisors is going to continue us on this path, and we will continue that as we move forward. And so to everyone out there who's watching, who is a part of this, who's been working on these issues of equality, fairness, justice, don't stop, continue to press ahead, and we'll continue to make San Diego a more perfect and more just place, and those efforts will certainly continue well into the future. And so I thank you all for being here and for the work that you did today. Before we vote, I see Supervisor Anderson wants to speak.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who called in, everybody who showed up to speak their mind. I think that a lot of great points were made on all sides. In 19, excuse me, 2018, I was one of the unanimous vote for California Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 78. And I think we all strive to make sure that women are treated fairly, that they have equal opportunity, and that we take care of each other. But I'm concerned about this document. I'm worried about Title IX and the implications that this may have on Title IX. And I'm also worried that in the wrong hands, this may weaponize a subject where we should be coming together, but may used to purge people or to go after folks. And I think it's the wrong direction. I think it's too aggressive. So just like the Democrat-led U.S. Senate, I can't support it today. But I certainly, I agree with your sentiment, Chair Fletcher, that we should be working for a better tomorrow together. Thank you.
Motion by Vice Chair Vargas, seconded by myself. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes. The Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present tend voting aye.